Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
I'd express appreciation. And I'm also really excited to be able to vote for something that has a tripartite governing advisory committee.
It's very unique, so having consumers on the board who are either eligible for services or representative of the consumer sector. Obviously, not a commission.
Well, thanks for all that work.
Would you just take a moment and address the communication process with the outlined partners for this?
So, we held a community input session. So, we worked early in the process. I think it was around the springtime to see if there were any concerns that came up with the community-based organizations, other partners that we worked with, funding agencies, that variety of funding streams that we get. We get some federal, some millage dollars through Kent County Senior Millage, as well as other funding streams. So, we held some community input sessions. Really, you know, the conversation started probably two and a half years ago when Asset has two divisions, Michigan Works Division and Community Action Division. And Michigan Works, we merged four administrative agencies into one to become a regional organization covering seven counties in West Michigan. And then there was a conversation around, well, since so many changes have occurred with the Michigan Works organization and the jurisdiction and the boundaries, you know, Asset's been going through a series of changes, as you can see from your memo, since 1985. Does it still make sense for a single county, you know, Community Action Agency to be a single county? Do we merge? We left our inter-local agreement open for either-or, either option, you know, to have the other jurisdictions say, hey, we want you to be the administrative agency. But we really found that there were opportunities within Kent County in community development block grant funds to serve our lowest income and our most vulnerable residents in Kent County. And so, we really saw this as an opportunity. You know, as Commissioner Talon said, it's been about, you know, two years, two and a half years of conversations. And so, we have been working with those organizations. We're working on a communication plan right now. I mean, I think that, I don't think that's necessarily finalized yet, but really, as we begin to roll out, we're working on rebranding. You know, when I say "we," it's mostly Kent County, since we don't have to do it anymore. But I think that together, we're all working together on this to make sure that it's a smooth transition for the residents, as well as that communication is getting out for those key partners after the transition. So, we presented at the Housing Commission, I think, as well as some of these changes. So, we're continuing to present as we continue to move forward, but don't want to move too forward in the fact that we haven't hit all the approval process through Kent County yet either. So, it's this delicate balance to make sure that we're communicating, but not getting too far ahead of the approval process.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go on to item four, health. We had that moved.
Yeah.
It's supported. We'll go to item four, health. Strong Beginnings Spectrum Health Foundation.
I'll read it. This is to approve the Health Department Spectrum Health Foundation contract for 2017-18 to incorporate $175,900 from Spectrum Health Foundation and $25,355 from the County General Fund to the 2017-18 health fund budget, and to authorize the Board Chair or designate to execute the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. For many years, Latinos in Kent County have experienced disparities in birth outcomes with infant mortality rates two times higher than Caucasians. The Spectrum Health Foundation's Strong Beginnings Grant Program has been providing funding to the Kent County Health Department through the Kellogg Foundation to address the disparities for the past 13 years. The Strong Beginnings Program goals are to reduce infant mortality rates for Latina women, to reduce the barriers for care for pregnant women, infant and toddlers through community outreach, case management, education, to improve care for pregnant women through improved screening and coordination, and to engage the Latina community to advocate for culturally competent care. The Health Department provides outreach support and case management services for the Latina women who live in Kent County and are pregnant, or the mother of a child of zero to two years of age. The agreement period for Spectrum Health Foundation contract is September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2018. In the event that grant funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions funded by this grant will be eliminated unless continued funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policies on grants, contracts, and donations.
Hey, is there a motion? Some of you support?
Support.
Thank you. With that, questions, comments, discussion?
I would like to have, you know, the Health Department Director come up and talk to us about the work that's been done over the last dozen or so years, because there have been improvements made in our infant mortality rates. And I would like to know, you know, since we now have a little bit of a long-to-do history to all this, are we following these children at all to see how it's affecting their lives and what the long-term outcomes might be?
Yeah, so thank you for the question, Commissioner Hennessy. This program began about a dozen years ago, and it began in the aftermath of some studies which really showed that Kent County had some of the highest infant mortality rates in the state. And within that infant mortality rate, there was quite a bit of disparity also. For every 1,000 live births, overall, about eight of those children did not survive their first birthday. For African-American children, that was about 19.4 didn't survive their first birthday. Hispanics, I believe, were about 12, and Caucasians were at around six. This program is one of many things that have been done in the community to get involved in those families, in those delicate, early family moments, to provide referrals and coaching and care management for those young, delicate families in order to get outcomes as best as possible. Since that time, as a community, we have seen that infant mortality rate fall in half. Overall, our infant mortality rate is now at about five to six. For African-Americans, it's below 10 for the first time, which is a lot of progress. For Hispanics, it's down near six now, and for white babies, it's about four and a half. All those numbers are trending downward, and have been doing steadily so over the past dozen years or so. And we believe this program is one of the many reasons why that is happening. The case management afterwards, see, children are eligible for this from prenatal to age two. After that, they're not covered by this program, and so there isn't much surveillance afterwards. That could be an area of improvement. But the funds allow us to do the early childhood and the care management in those first couple of years.
So then, we're not able to follow the children once they're not eligible for the program to see, you know, if it really impacts their lives as they reach, now reach, start to reach the teen years?
Right. So that would be a quality improvement idea that we'd love to look into and find ways to finance. The primary focus of this has been getting those children to survive to age one, and to that end, it has been effective.
Okay, thank you.
We've done the math on this, looking at what would have happened if, as a community, we would have stayed at those same rates that we had in 2002 until today. And based on the math, there are about 137 children that are with us today that would not have been if we stayed at those same rates in 2002.
If I could, go one more. You have different partners in this. Can you explain a little bit more about the relationships between, you know, you, Spectrum Health, its foundation, the Kellogg Foundation, Strong Beginnings, how it all works together?
Yeah, so, the funding from Kellogg goes to Spectrum, and Spectrum then were a sub-recipient of that money. Now, that does not mean that we only care for Spectrum's clients in our program. We actually receive clients from any number of providers. In fact, many of them have no provider at all. These are children who are enrolled in our maternal and infant health program. And the enrollment, the recruitment for that program comes from nonprofit organizations, from word of mouth, from other care providers, from other programs, such as the WIC program. So, we also work with neighborhood associations and the grassroots to really get people to understand these resources are available to them. So, we work collaboratively with a number of organizations to drive enrollment in that program.
Commissioner Mast?
Well, I was just gonna follow up a little bit of what Commissioner Hennessy was saying. So, do you pick the families that get outreach? Who does that?
That happens through our maternal and infant health program. So, these are Medicaid-eligible families, again, between prenatal and age two. And this offer is made to them, and they voluntarily accept or not to be a participant in the program.
So, it's only Latino?
It's Latina, and the next action request that you're looking at is African-American.
Okay, okay. I did look far into the head, okay.
And that's because the Kellogg Foundation wanted to fund programming focused on fixing that problem of disparity in infant mortality.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. Yeah, kind of tying into these other discussions, first of all, thank you to the Kellogg Foundation once again, West Michigan, you know, people stepping up. I'm glad to hear the numbers are coming down so much. That's pretty significant. The remaining mortality rate, how much of it you suppose goes towards systemic issues that still exist as opposed to, there's got to be some personal responsibility issues, I would think, yeah. And we know we're never going to eliminate it totally, just because life is challenging. Sometimes we give, you know, delve the bad hand. But it sounds like we've got the number down to where it's getting, the groups are getting closer. And how much of this would you say we still lack, some of the personal responsibility, people just not doing the right thing with their kids? And how much can we actually intercede in that situation?
Yeah, so that's a difficult question to answer, Commissioner Antor. You're right, there will always be some infant mortality, and within these rates include things like accidents. It includes infants that are born with severe birth defects, in which there's not a whole lot that can be done to prevent that. Accidents is something that we've made a lot of progress with in partnership with law enforcement and others, making sure that children have good car seats and they're being properly used. That's one of the reasons why this number has come down also. The remainder, and it's hard to quantify, personal responsibility is an element, but personal education, knowledge are elements also. Sleep safety is a great example. It's a personal responsibility to make sure that the child is sleeping properly and not co-sleeping with others and so forth. But if people don't know what the proper way to sleep with the child or the proper safe sleeping environment is...
Are you talking about SIDS?
Yes, yeah. So, some of that's unpreventable, but a great deal, the research demonstrates, is preventable. But the prevention is really rooted in knowledge. You can't prevent something that you don't know about. And so, this is one of those programs that is really, they're coaching young mothers and fathers on best practices for keeping babies safe.
Can I follow up real quick?
Sure.
Just a question too about the My Child program we have in the state of Michigan for low-income families. Is that being utilized fully, do you think? Are people aware of that insurance program?
Used fully. I don't know, I think there's always opportunities for people to take greater advantage of those resources that are available. We certainly work through this program and others to make sure that, again, that they know what those resources are. So, I'm confident that the families in these programs know about My Child.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. These are, both this resolution and the next one are for amazing programs, and I'm pretty familiar with them and recognize the improvement in the outcomes for families in Kent County. I just want to suggest that we think about including some of that information in our in our action request. I looked at this, and I saw all the things that are being done, and I wanted to ask the question that I asked for a couple of years on LHR, so what? And have in here, I want to be able to vote on not just doing stuff, but on doing stuff that is making a difference. So, we see that Strong Beginnings is trying to reduce infant mortality rate. How are we doing on that? I don't see that in this resolution, and I don't want to vote for this. I wouldn't want to vote for it if I didn't already know that we were making that progress. But I think it's important to note that, and for that to be part of why we're moving this ahead. So, just a suggestion, as we move forward, integrating the outcomes for the work that we're paying for and that we're supporting as a county, along with the actual stuff that we're doing. Just that comment I wanted to share. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I could quickly add one more comment in regards to Commissioner Hennessy's questions. While we have not done follow-up evaluations, looking at outcomes years down the road, there is a body of literature which has done that sort of evaluation of programs like this. And that literature has clearly shown that there are improved academic outcomes, there are improved safety outcomes, there are improved economic outcomes for families that get off to a good, healthy start in this way, and had that sort of surrounding of support. So, to that end, I think this is firmly rooted in the evidence base as a very demonstrably effective program.
That is good to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. Any other questions, comments, or discussion points? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go to item five, health. Another Strong Beginnings program, Spectrum Health Hospitals?
Yeah, this is a similar request to approve the Health Department Spectrum Health Hospitals contract for the same period, 2017 through 18, and appropriate $309,881 from Spectrum, and $10 from reimbursements, and $102,800 from the County General Fund in the 2017-18 health fund budget, and to authorize the Board Chair or designate to execute agreements and approve extensions within 15% of the award. Strong Beginnings, again, is a home visiting program. It uses community health workers to work alongside social workers and nurses, and the maternal-infant health program to provide services that require, that do not require the skill or expertise of a nurse or social worker. Spectrum Health Foundation's Strong Beginnings Grant, again, was started through the Kellogg Foundation and has been existing for the past 13 years. Strong Beginning Program goals, again, are to provide improvement in birth outcomes, decrease the rate of infant mortality, and reduce the barriers of care for pregnant women, infant, and toddlers. The Health Department provides outreach services, support and case management services to high-risk women who live in Kent County and are pregnant, again, children who are under zero to two eight years of age. The agreement period for this contract is September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2018. And should funding be eliminated or decreased, the positions funded by this grant will be eliminated unless continued funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants and donations.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there support?
Support.
Questions, comments, discussion items? Yes, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Just wondering how our relationship is between our community health workers when they're out on the road, maybe going to some of these residents or whatever, and child protective services, to make sure that those two aren't butting heads, and they're making it, I guess it's easy for CPS to do their work if they see a problem. And do they work together to try to resolve kids' issues as opposed to worry about, I don't know? You know, let's do what's right happen, then?
Yeah, it's a great question. They do work closely together. In fact, our employees are all mandatory reporters. So, whenever we see a situation which is an imminent hazard or concern, we work very closely and report that immediately to CPS. We've also worked with CPS and Senator Jones, looking at legislation which would build better relationships between public health and CPS, and create a structure that could prevent some of the deaths that we've seen resulting from drug-exposed infants. So, yeah, they're a regular partner of ours that we're very closely with. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Wolfman?
Yes, I wanted to ask, what are some of the services that they provide when they're at these homes that don't require the expertise of a nurse or social worker? And what are some of the training that they do get for some of the staff that's going door to door? That's going out to homes?
Thank you, Commissioner Wolfman. All of the families that are enrolled in this program are also enrolled in the maternal and infant health program. And that program has a nurse which goes to each of the homes. And so, they have a relationship with the nurse. With Strong Beginnings, this is a supplement to that program. And in this program, it's community health workers, social workers, sometimes it's also nurses in this program that are providing this service, which is based more on the coaching, the referrals, providing care above and beyond just the health concerns of the mom and the baby. It's also going further into relationships with the father, and perhaps other family members who live in the home. So, it's really a more holistic approach to wellness in that home. And there is a very rigorous training program that is part and parcel of Strong Beginnings. It's an order for us to receive the funding. We have to meet a certain training schedule for those people to be qualified to work in the program. So, it's very intense.
Commissioner Hennessy?
I have a question on the total funding. How has funding changed for this program over the years? Going up, down, you know, staying steady? What has been the progression of funding?
That's a great question, and I don't have a great answer for you right now. I'd have to look at our finances for the past several years, but I could certainly provide that to you today.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Two quick questions. One, I'm curious about the $10 from reimbursements, why that's necessary. And secondly, I think the grant summary on the back is just a duplicate of the last one.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you're correct on that. We'll make sure it gets switched out. But the $10 reimbursement, it's, we just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what the total dollars are that are being spent on the program. You're right, it's probably not substantial, but we wanted to make sure...
So, that's just a reimbursement account? It's just...
Probably, it's a placeholder. Most of the Medicaid reimbursement happens through the maternal and infant health program. So, all the activities that are eligible for reimbursement through Medicaid go through that program. I think that's a placeholder in this grant in case there was something outside of the scope of MASP that could be built through Strong Beginnings.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Adams. We'll go to item six, park, acquire property to expand Fallsburg Park.
Yes, this is a request to purchase 12.8 acres of property adjacent to Fallsberry Park from Gail W. Parker and Lynn A. Warren for $275,000 in closing costs to create the Fallsberry Park Expansion Program project in the 2000 capital improvement program fund budget, to accept and appropriate $110,000 in grant funding, and to transfer $169,000 from existing projects in the CIP fund to the project. Two parcels totaling 12.8 acres of land at the gateway to Fallsberry Park have become available for purchase. In addition to offering a mix of open fields, woods, and historic stone walls, adding this land to the footprint of the park will provide more sustainable overflow event parking while preserving the natural and historic character of the park setting. The purchase price of $275,000 includes two single-family homes with outbuildings on two separate parcels and is supported by appraisals. Closing costs are estimated at $4,000. The Lowell Area Community Fund has awarded a grant of $110,000 toward this project.
Hey, is there a motion to approve? Some of you, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Just a comment, I see we're taking $169,000 out of our CIP. I know we have extra funds in there, but I just want to remind, we have other obligations. I feel that, I'm going to be voting for this, but that we don't forget, we got to go through some of that CIP project money and determine overall how we ought to spend it. We spent a few a piecemeal, but I'll just bring that to our attention. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. I guess I have a question for Roger. Good. Morning, Roger.
Good morning.
Just a question about, it looks like we've got now, after this acquisition, we'll have one little kind of an island of property there. And is there any thought about that in the future in talks, or...
Yeah, so I'm, that part of this process just didn't get in sync with this. I am talking to that landowner, and what we are looking at is to get a conservation easement. So, as you drive into Fallsburg Park now, you're going to think we own everything on the left side of the, on the north side of Fallsburg Park Drive, and we just don't. And there's a stone wall that's been there for decades. So, in the action today, we're buying what we need to expand overflow parking and secondary access. And in talking to the other house that's there, we're going to get a, I hope, get a conservation easement which will protect that view shed and a first right of refusal.
The conservation easement, can you just explain how that works?
That basically creates an easement that protects the wall and a certain area, however we define it. And so, we wouldn't have another driveway or another house that would be accessed off of Fallsburg Park Drive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. This money in CIP from existing projects is always a mystery to me and perhaps to other commissioners. I'm wondering if we could get some kind of accounting of what's still in there, and maybe a little bit of an idea of... a little bit of an idea of how does this work that a particular project ends up being chosen to use those dollars?
Okay.
Is that Mary?
So this, the money is not leftover extra money. It is a project, we're not going to pave a portion of Towns and Park, and this is a multi-phase paving project. We did complete phase one. The money that we're talking about today was part of phase two, and we had a CIP request in not this past round, but the round prior that did not get funded. We were going to combine that CIP project that didn't get funded with what the monies we're talking about today into a bigger project all at once. When we didn't get that CIP project, it also aligned up with the fact that this property became available, and we already knew, we just didn't have enough money in the pot. So we're basically canceling or postponing because we're going to come back around and say, you know, the paving projects, you know, a year or two from now. But we need, we need money for this acquisition, and this is the way to achieve that. The warning property became available because of a death in the family, so the availability of the property and the availability of the funds linked up, and that's why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Yeah, Mary Swanson.
It wasn't extra money that just is sitting in a CIP account.
Okay, we're going to have Mary take a minute too and add some more to that. Thanks, Roger.
Yeah, Roger spoke kind of to this specific project, but, excuse me. Overall, fiscal services at the end of every year, there's any open CIP projects because sometimes they don't always get completed at the end of a year. So they work with all the departments and send out a notice for everything that's open and says, is this done? Is it completed? When do you think it's going to be completed? What's holding it up? Is it a grant form? Is it an issue of acquisition with a family, that type of thing? And so at December thirty-one, they kind of say, here's our still-open projects, here's one we're canceling out. Excuse me, allergies right now. With this particular one, we don't have a whole list of projects. If they're open, the funds are in them and they remain in them, but because Roger knew this was coming and also knew of his Towns and Park delay, that's why we were able to transfer that money kind of mid-year like this, because it just happened that he was the manager for both of those projects. The other funding for this is coming from the Parks Acquisition and Development CIP, which has been an open CIP for many, many years because that was, we ceded that with some money a while back, and we have been using it. You will see a request, we hope, later this year to use that fund again, the remainder of that, that's kind of been earmarked for a grant that we got to acquire some property in Millennium Park. So that is earmarked there, but it hasn't been spent for that yet. So that's kind of on a macro level, how that process works, and then on a specific level, how it worked with this one.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
Just to clarify, is the one hundred and sixty-nine thousand the same amount as the other parks project that was in CIP? Is it...
It started out as a one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar project. I think Roger spent a...
Okay, so it's what was left in it?
Right. And if there's any little drips and grabs left, they close that out at the end of the year.
And if I could ask, again, I think I've asked before, if it would be possible to get some sort of an accounting on that fund, of the things that have been closed out that have balances, so that we kind of know what's sitting out there that's not allocated at this point in the CIP?
So what we have is a list of the open projects as of December thirty-one and the balances that were in those accounts as of December thirty-one. I mean, this is an ongoing thing as, but, so we have all of those as of December thirty-one. It was a little more than seventy projects, and I think, I don't want to quote the dollars, but we can get you that, but those...
And that's not what I'm interested in, if I could follow up. What I'm asking about is projects that have been closed out that underspent.
Okay.
Oh, that's...
And so there's money remaining in the CIP, which, you know, I think happens from time to time, so...
Right, where we've closed it out as of December thirty-one or whatever date and...
And it came in under budget or under allocation.
Right, and we would have that, we'd probably have some that come in a little bit over, and so...
Right.
They have to keep the fund balance and keep cash flow in there. I'm pretty sure fiscal can come up with something.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the flexibility, staff, and being able to take advantage of something that pops up like this. Rog, this isn't anything out of the ordinary, correct? I mean, we've been moving money around in the CIP for a long, long time.
I took all those notes.
I just want to know if this is...
This, again, is another parcel that we've been looking at for many years and...
I remember going after Fallsburg Park when I was chair, so some parcels. So this is all part of this puzzle to get this done, so appreciate the flexibility. I think if we didn't give the staff the flexibility to do this within the CIP, that we'd be drastically overpaying them, but that's just another, another comment, but, so...
Commissioner Coleman?
Just a quick question, so the, this particular request funds the acquisition and closing costs. Is there going to be costs associated with demolition of those buildings to convert it into a parking area?
There'll be some cost in that, and they, we do have a CIP that's been approved for next year that will take care of some of the development. Anytime we have buildings that are going to come down, we offer it to local law enforcement and/or fire departments to do training on. And sometimes they do that for many, many months as they train in confined spaces.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy?
I really appreciate being able to expand our current system of parks, both in this and the next request. I think it's really great. I had a little bit of a queasy feeling to see that we're buying this property and then to look at the plans and see it as a parking lot, turning it into a parking lot. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so it's only a large event parking, so we have some large events at Fallsburg Park, the Arts Festival being the one largest. And so if you look at the aerial photos, every year we destroy our Ball Diamond by parking cars there. So the idea is to get the cars off the Ball Diamond and get them into open field. So we're not going to, you won't be able to see this parking from Fallsburg Park Drive. It's sort of the back door, and we will, yes, we will clear some area, and yes, we're going to provide a secondary drive access out to Big Road. But that, that helps us keep the Ball Diamond in a playable, suitable state.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I also agree that it's great that we are, have an opportunity to acquire some new land for our parks. You talked about overflow for parking, so I wanted to ask, what are some of the major events yearly held at Fallsberry Park and what are some of the activities that are at Fallsberry Park?
Well, the biggest event is the Fall Arts Festival, and that's fifteen thousand people in the cars that go with it. And, you know, we don't pave the parking, we create an open field and mow the grass and park them on that. That's by far the biggest. That's a two-day event plus setup and takedown, and there's some other events, there's some biking events that actually create a lot of parking out there, too.
Are there any programs for the Baseball Diamond? Are there any groups utilized for the youth?
We don't do recreation programming. We allow groups to program a field, but we don't do it. And in this particular location, and given the quality of the field, there isn't any here. There are at other fields that do some programming for Little League Baseball.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hennessy, you had done, did you have more follow-up?
What I, I also appreciate that both in this and the next request, that you're finding other resources to help augment our funds or the, you know...
We have to.
Well, I can appreciate that, too, given our budgets, but it is nice to see these put together so that we have partners in the process.
Commissioner Morgan?
Rog, real quick, that access road will be capable of handling emergency equipment, emergency vehicles, because...
Yeah, that'll be a gravel road.
You know, we've had incidents out there, and it's just really hard to get access, even if to some, if something happens out there at one of these events. So I want to make sure that we can get emergency vehicles in and out of there, so...
Commissioner Womack, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, one last question. In our Parks Department, is, what are we doing to try to advertise to the public or reach out to have our parks more utilized, our Kent County parks, more utilized by other organizations and people that might provide some programs for the youth?
Well, I guess, first of all, I think our parks are pretty heavily utilized. They may not be utilized on a Tuesday morning, but they are, you know...
You said the biggest event is the Falls, is our Fall Art Exhibit there. So we got the winter, we got the summer, especially the summer.
Yeah, and...
Was our biggest summer event.
The programming, when it comes to youth programming, particularly in the Fallsburg area, it comes under Lowell and the school programs. We just don't have recreation programming. We just don't do it.
I know the county does it, but, you know...
Other units do do it, and we allow them to use our parks. That's never been a problem, but we just don't do it. The, you know, if, if groups out of Lowell want to use the parks, we'll work with them to make sure. This park in particular, because of the Ball Diamond, doesn't necessarily lend itself to act as sport. Other parks do.
Do we have any online presence for our parks if some, you know, for people to know, like, these are all the parks that are available for the county? These are the things that it's open for?
Yes.
Whether it's family...
We have a great website that Bob, Bob created, so...
Why don't you check out accesskent.com and go to parks?
Believe me.
It's very, very detailed on what's available, and you can, you can even book your cabins and a lot of different options through Access Kent on the park's website.
Very familiar with Access Kent and the Parks Department. I just, when I hear about Fallsberry Park, there's some events that were historically there that brought people in the summer that were, those, some of those events were eliminated.
Yes.
They had the great giant reggae festival they used to have in the summer.
And, and, and that was eliminated. There were, there was too much beer, there was too much, too many problems, and there were two girls killed, and we said, we're not doing concerts anymore.
Yeah, that's good that they're not doing concerts, but at the same time, you know, just, you know, with Four Seasons and with the great summer, and we had a great summer, it'd be great to see some type of events happening in the summer, or just some outreach. And I've seen the website, but the website, to me, Access Kent, is more if you are, if you are reaching out and looking for something, but it doesn't seem like we're reaching out to let people know about our great services as much as we could be. And that's not taking any shots at the parks, it's just something as a commissioner I think we need to start doing, is advertising the great facilities we have and the things that we have to offer, not just parks, but as a whole with Kent County. And online, when I see the children using online, they're much ahead of us. I might not even like some of the things they're advertising, but they are doing some great outreach.
One of the, one of the links, and, you know, Facebook is a great tool that most people utilize today. With the hiring of Lisa LaPlante and our communications group, we've done way more communication to the public. We can do more, but I can tell you that we get a lot of hits on programs, and we really ramped that effort up. I would say we're probably better than most counties close to us, but we can do better. So my, my, my hope is that you will see that. We can, we can talk more, but I believe we've got a strong presence in the community, we can do better.
Thank you, because, thanks for mentioning Facebook, because I will take a look at the Facebook, and then I can link my constituents to it.
That would be, that would be great.
Thanks a lot.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Roger. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. We'll go to item seven, also for parks. So Roger, stay in the front row.
This is to recommend to the board to approve the land acquisition agreement as provided by the Michigan Department of National Resources for the acquisition of approximately one hundred and forty-five acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park, to create the Chief Hazy Cloud Expansion Project in two thousand seventeen Capital Improvement Fund Budget, and to accept and appropriate two hundred and one, two million one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in DNR grant funds and two hundred, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from various other sources to the project. On March twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, sixteen, the board commissioners approved a middle to a, to grant request to the Michigan Department of National Resources Trust Fund seeking funding to acquire approximately one hundred and forty-five acres of land adjacent to Chief Hazy Cloud Park and Ada Township on the Grand River. In December two thousand sixteen, the DNR awarded grant funding to cover up to seventy percent of the cost of the acquisition, estimated at three point seven five million dollars. The nine hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred local match will be funded with three hundred thousand dollars from Ada Township, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-two thousand from the Kent County Parks Foundation, and three hundred thousand dollars previously included in the two thousand seventeen County General Fund Budget. To proceed with the grant award, the DNR requires a resolution by the board indicating acceptance of the terms in the project agreement, including the appropriation of required funds. The agreement has been reviewed and approved as informed by Assistant Corporate Counsel.
Hey, is there a motion to approve?
Someone?
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Okay, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Jones. It's in the cost funding recommendation, the last part there says, and three hundred thousand from the County General Fund to the Chief Hazy Cloud Expansion Project in the two thousand seventeen. So we're going to transfer an additional three hundred thousand into the CIP fund budget?
It's coming from the two thousand seventeen CIP budget, fund, yes. Those dollars were appropriated. Why don't we have either Marvin or Steve come up and address that question?
So is this a new three hundred thousand going into the CIP funds, or was this previously appropriated?
This is, these are funds that are in the general fund. They were earmarked as part of the board work session first of March to go to CIP if and when this grant was approved. And then later on in March, the board gave permission to pursue this grant at, as it said, per resolution from March seventeenth. So now we're waiting on this for the funds to be appropriated, so that we can transfer them to the CIP fund. So this is the final, final step in the process.
We previously appropriated, and this is the move of...
The funds are available in the general fund.
Not available, but appropriated, were they appropriated?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Roger, I missed this over the week, I just haven't noticed it now, but I'm not sure, the satellite photo, if that was taken, if the river was really low at that point or what, but is that an island or a peninsula?
Yes, it is an island.
That is an island.
Because I noticed the boundary there, it kind of skirts some land along the bottom
there, where it follows it, the contour completely.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So sometimes the property line with the river, you gain, you gain some land and you lose some land sometimes with the flow of the river.
Okay, so that the actual river isn't the property line there.
Yeah. So what, this is process that we have a grant approved, we, once the DNR approves that, then the local unit, county, has to approve a project agreement. Then once they sign off on it, we sign off, they sign off, then we go through the appraisal process, then it comes back for the actual acquisition.
Who actually owns that, then, the land that's contiguous, but it's detached? Who actually owns that and the land that's, it's contiguous, but it's detached?
Um, the, the ownership may have changed. Uh, we, we've been talking to BDR, which is a housing developer.
But that's not a problem at all, having?
No, that's not a problem at all.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Towne?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very supportive of both this project and the previous one, and I'm still confused about, Commissioner Voorhees is the answer to that question about, about how this happened. And perhaps it's related to the bullet in the summary, says it's from the general fund budget, but the action request says the 300,000, uh, from the county is from the capital improvement fund budget, which we usually talk about as different things. So I'm still a little bit confused about the process of getting that 300,000.
These were dollars that were previously allocated via the CIP process.
Last year.
Last year, correct. And so those dollars.
So wasn't part of the general fund budget except that it's the CIP that is a piece of the general?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're just using them now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Mast?
Well, I was just going to follow, because, because the grant process took two years, it looks like, or, yeah, well, a good year anyway, to process. So we had to, we had to get this money prior to submitting of the grant, I think. We had to have a reserve prior to submitting. My, my question, Roger, is just kind of looking at this, what, what, what is it, you know, it looks like that's a lot of probably flood land almost? It must flood in the heavy spring or so, cause the river flows that way.
Yes.
So what would it possibly be used as as we?
You can, uh, you can just divide up the road frontage and, and put a house every X number 100 feet, I think, uh, and have multiple lots that, that have access down to the river.
So potentially sell it for private development, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
And, and the, the appraisal process will reflect highest and best use and it's going to be housing.
So we would probably keep some of it for parkland, but then probably along, right along Pettus Avenue?
No, we'll keep all of it for parkland.
But what, but what you're saying is?
We'll develop a trail system and, and, and parking and restroom.
What, what, I think you said sell some of it for development?
No, no, we won't.
We won't? Okay, okay.
We won't. That's what a hu, that's what a housing developer would do.
Okay, okay, that's why we had, that's why the appraisal was relatively high.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Coleman?
Just a quick comment, I don't know, uh, the process involved in the DNR grant funding, but you're obviously quite good at, uh, pulling money out of the DNR grant process, so just want to express appreciation for that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Towne?
Just a follow-up, Chair.
Sure.
I'm, I'm looking at the 2017 CIP budget and I'm not seeing this in there. Did we add it in later on? I'm still six, not biting there, sorry.
It was 2016.
16.
26?
No, 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 no. Let, let's have Marvin come up and explain this. I think I might have made an error in plan, sir.
Once this, if and when this is approved, it will then become a CIP project. It's not yet a CIP project.
So we are taking, like a follow-up, we are taking the dollars out of the general fund, we're transferring them into the 2017 CIP, this current year's CIP?
Correct.
If, if, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe Steve could answer this question more clearly, but weren't these funds that were, uh, uh, taken from the 2.1 million dollar, um, fund? We, we, did we pull those dollars from that, from those dollars, from these zoo funds? I thought we, we did that? Maybe, maybe that's not the right location.
When these, when these funds were originally appropriated in the general fund?
Right.
Into 2017, it was part of the zoo budget.
Right.
But now it's just general tax dollars that's available to be transferred to this project. It was earmarked in March at the board work session, and then right after that, this resolution was approved by the board to submit this grant with those funds, and now is the final step to appropriate it.
Okay, great.
So it's that process.
Thank you.
That helps, thank you.
All right.
Perfect. All right, any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Womack?
I'd just like to, uh, lead Roger with a comment of reggae being a part of African-American, uh, history when it comes to music and, uh, brothers in the South, in South America. When, when you say that, um, there was drinking and these things happening at the reggae fest, I just have to say, um, it seems like when you mention alcohol, it was like, it was negative. I don't drink, I don't really encourage people to drink, but I know adults are free to do what they, what they want to do, but we live, I live in a city, Grand Rapids, that's been labeled as the Beer City, and even when I was in Washington, Betsy DeVos, at one of the briefings, uh, was proud to say that, uh, we were known as the Beer City. Also, I noticed in our city, we have a place called the Bob where people have consumed alcohol and jumped off and young people sadly lost their lives. And it seems that the Bob is still open, there seems to be a number of events that people have drove away from and had car accidents and died in this, uh, reggae fest back historically when that happened, and I was, uh, here in Grand Rapids, Michigan, I remember it was a big blow to the community. There's been a number of African-American clubs and bars that have been shut down because of drinking and different situations, but we understand here in Kent County that houses Grand Rapids known as the fifth worst place for African-Americans to live, that when those type of incidents happen involving a minority, um, event that they're told not to ever come back. And historically, whenever it's brought back up, those type of incidents, cause it's very sad that two girls lost their lives. Um, but I would hate to see this community feel that Kent County is not a place they can ever go when they're looking for concert events or things like that on Kent County facilities, when we have so many other venues in Kent County that have the same thing happen and they're not marked with that.
Commissioner Womack? If we could have your comments for that in miscellaneous, right now, we're on the parks purchase of 145 acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park, so can you see where those comments would be better under miscellaneous?
Yeah, I know where we're at, Hazy Park, and that was, that was the end of my comment.
Right, so we could do, we could finish Hazy Park and then you could, you know, if you have additional thoughts on that, do it in miscellaneous. Okay, Commissioner Womack?
I was part of the public safety response to that venue and I'd, I'll have a couple of comments during miscellaneous.
Oh, miscellaneous, okay. So with that, um, any other questions or comments on the purchase of 145 acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed, motion passes. Now we'll go to miscellaneous. What do we have for Commissioner Miscellaneous?
I, I'd just like to respond, I was part of the public safety response, uh, for a lot of, uh, uh, community functions and, and, and organizations out at Fallsburg Park. And I think what Roger was saying is, it wasn't a very good venue for it, because like I was trying to allude earlier, there wasn't, uh, the greatest access for emergency equipment in there, and if there was an issue, it was just, it was a huge mess to try and manage it. It was just the wrong venue, I think. Roger, was that what you were trying to say, that Fallsburg Park wasn't a very good venue for some of these things?
I think the parks are set up for large, large groups, uh, and, uh, with basically anybody is welcome, maybe in terms of numbers, anybody can come to ours and work with the large numbers, with no limit on ticket sales, uh, and this doesn't work well.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, and I want to say, knowing Roger, I, um, I know that Roger definitely didn't mean it like that. So this was just basically a statement I wanted to say for just Kent County as a history of, as a whole and a perception from my community. And, um, when Roger said that, that isn't something he just made up, that's something that's really been carried in Kent County. And, you know, my voters voted for me to be a voice for them, and some of the, uh, opinions they have may not be popular, some of the opinions they have might turn out to be myth, but it's good for Kent County to know how it's perceived by all of the constituents of Kent County. But I definitely, uh, know where Roger's heart is, a good friend of mine, um, and I want to just say, Roger, thank you for your presentation today, and that was just something that, um, probably need to be heard by Kent County.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Miscellaneous, yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Jones. I don't know if others, uh, noticed the article in the Grand Rapids Press a couple weeks ago, but it, it made the statement that, uh, Spectrum Health was moving 17 beds out of the 750 Fuller Avenue, uh, facility. I'm hoping we're making some contacts to try to have some type of form to find out what are their plans for that building. And so I don't know if we've made any enrolls, but I would just like that we would and find out just what spectrum plan is.
Yep, that contact's been on a regular basis. Commissioner Towne?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that, um, Commissioner Womack talked about his community, the community that he represents, and I want to recognize that that community is also my community, it's also all of our community. And, and, in, in the almost dozens of years that I've been associated with this board, um, I have, I have seen unintentional things that happen, um, things that we tend to overlook, ten, things that we don't tend to see, and I appreciate, um, Commissioner Womack, uh, raising some of those. And, and I recognize, um, even in what was said this morning, when we talk about a concern about parks not being able to handle large crowds, and then recognize that we just talked in the resolution about expanding, uh, the parking area, we're talking about a very loud large crowd that goes to the Arts Festival. So, so it's okay to have certain large crowds, but it's not okay to have other kinds of large crowds. I recognize there's nothing intentional about that, but, but just want to, um, speak in support of the concerns that the commissioner's raising and just ask us to, to keep thinking about those things and trying to recognize those things that sometimes just happen unintentionally. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Antor?
Yeah, just a comment today. I, I, several years ago, Roger, you may have been a part of this emergency response, but B-93 does their birthday bash every year, and they did it down by Iona. They did it there because it was a big tract of land, they thought it would work, and it's like Woodstock every year, all these people go there. But turns out, if you get heavy rain that type of year.
All the flooded cars.
There was hundreds, if not a thousand, cars that were flooded and destroyed, because it turns out that was a bad spot. There was no ill will or, you know, I mean, it was just the fact of the matter, some places are conducive to certain types of events. An emergency response seems to me is critical in everything we do, we're always talking about, how do we get to people? We got this new incredibly expensive, uh, radio network now, why, so we can communicate and get first responders in as fast as possible. So I understand your concerns, and I don't, obviously, I don't think there's any ill will, but to me, that's a pretty good reason not to host it again, and people die as a result of, um, we can't get vehicles back, there, or there's not proper oversight from law enforcement or whatever, so.
Well, someone died who drove away from the event, not because they couldn't get in there though.
Well, I'm not sure, but I mean, that's what I'm, I, I just think sometimes there's better locations, whether it's a better location on another county property, but sometimes, you know, through trial and error, some places just don't work well.
All right. With that, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.